Welcome. Thank you, everyone, for joining us on this day, September 21st, 2020, for the Carlsbad City Council District Two and District Four Candidate Forum. I'm Elizabeth Bravy, your moderator this evening. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of North County San Diego. The League was formed 100 years ago. It's a big anniversary for us this year. We came into being about the same time the 19th Amendment giving women the right to vote passed. Our charter is almost the same as it was 100 years ago. What we really care about is informed and active participation in government. We're part of the educational arm of the League of Women Voters, and as such, we take no position for or against any candidate or any political party. The co-sponsors this evening are actually the League of Women Voters North County San Diego, but your local Carlsbad unit. And we want to just say thank you to them for the work they've done getting this organized and bringing the candidates to you this evening. Let me tell you a little bit about this format. The candidates have already agreed to this in advance. We are going to be recording the format, which I guess you'll know if you're watching it on videotape. And when we publish it, it's going to be published to the League of Women Voters North County San Diego's YouTube channel. Per FCC rules, it can only be replayed in its entirety and cannot be edited for campaign or other uses. Nancy Telford from the League is with us tonight as our multimedia lead. She has muted all the mics, except for those of the candidates and myself. Likewise, she's turned off the chat and question feature. She's done that because we solicited questions from the community in advance of this event. We've had two League-trained moderators who have gone through all the questions. It's Ronnie C. and Heather Callahan. And when they go through the questions, what they're doing is they're looking to sort out duplicates. They're looking to take out anything that's not relevant to this election or any offensive language. And then they try to make sure we know which are the subjects of most interest to your constituents. So in the short time we have this evening, we can try to get those questions answered. Now, the Carlsbad City Council has been in transition to districts versus at-large representation. So as I mentioned before, tonight, there are two seats open, the District Two seat and the District Four seat. Those are for four-year terms. We're fortunate enough to have both candidates running for both of those seats this evening. The candidates are all going to answer the same questions at a randomly selected order that was done prior to this taping. What I will say is to make it easier for people watching the tape, we'll keep the district candidates paired together. You'll understand as we flow through. In general, you're going to have one minute for your opening, one minute to respond to questions, and one minute for your closing. I say "in general" because as moderator, I always reserve the right to add a little time if it's a really complicated question, or even to go to a speed round if I have some short yes-and-no ones to throw at you. We're very fortunate tonight to have a timer, another League member, Arlene von Schleter. She's going to show you how she's going to help keep us on track tonight. Arlene?
Hi, my name is Arlene. I'm part of the League. And when you're 30 seconds in, I'll hold that up. And then when you're ready to finish, I will hold the stop. So each person will get one minute unless Elizabeth tells you differently. I'm going to go on mute, and good luck to everyone, and thank you.
With that, let's start our candidate introductions and opening comments. Remember, you'll have one minute. We're going to start with candidate Panagiotis.
Hi, my name is Leila Panagiotis. I'm the owner of a leadership development company where I've spent over two decades helping companies, organizations, and teams transition during times of change. I'm a business leader, a community volunteer, a problem solver, and most importantly, a mom. I think that Carlsbad is the best place to live. We have wonderful schools, open spaces, beaches, and libraries. And it's going to really take innovative, creative problem-solving to maintain and improve the quality of life we enjoy here. And just because we're in a time of crisis doesn't mean that our core values have changed. To me, an effective government means putting the people and our Carlsbad community vision first, not special interests. It means being creative and flexible to meet the needs of our residents. And I'm running on four things: one, to protect our open spaces and the environment, improve our road safety and mobility, to support our small businesses, and finally, to provide quality public services to our seniors. I look forward to serving you. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Blackburn.
Good evening. My name is Keith Blackburn. I've served as our city as a police sergeant, and most recently, I've served the past 12 years as your council member. Sometimes people decide that they're going to run for office because they want to make change. In my particular case, I'm trying, I'm running because I want to preserve what we have. Some of the things that I've been involved with is volunteerism. I volunteer at the Carlsbad Animal Shelter, the Boys and Girls Club of Carlsbad, Meals on Wheels, and Junior Achievement. The reason I share that is because it gives me an opportunity to see what the public wants and be involved in the community. So between my time as a police sergeant, as a council member, and my volunteerism in the city, I feel as though I have a very good handle on our community. And that's why I want to continue to serve our wonderful city and keep Carlsbad the jewel of North County. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Acosta.
Hi, no problem. My name is Teresa Acosta, and I'm running for Carlsbad City Council in District Four. I'm a small business owner here in Carlsbad and an active community leader. For the past 20 years, I've worked with government agencies throughout California to help them serve their communities better. For the past 10 years, I've been a small business owner, building public-private partnerships. I know that it is important that we look at our current generation and our quality of life now, and those are future generations. I'm one of four generations here in District Four, from my grandmother, who's 97, to my daughter, who's 21. I will champion our environments, well-managed infrastructure, our local economy, and public safety. Thank you for the opportunity to have the discussion here tonight, and I look forward to talking with you all about our issues.
Thank you. Candidate Urbina.
Carlsbad has always been a place where families thrive. I've lived here in Carlsbad for 40 years. My wife and I have raised our family here in South Carlsbad for the past 25 years. Carlsbad has city services second to none. We have great parks, we have great roads, we have great libraries, we have well-managed and well-funded police and fire departments. That's not by accident. It's because previous city councils have exercised long-term planning and sound financial management. I want to be one of the next council members to follow in their footsteps. I stands for public safety. People should feel, Carlsbad residents should feel safe in our neighborhoods. Fiscal responsibility, this is going to be particularly important as we come out of the COVID pandemic, and responsible managed growth that maintains the character of the Carlsbad we love. I'm Phil Urbina, Carlsbad City Council candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Now that the introductions are done, let's dive into these questions that the community has sent to you. The first one is, what is your plan to help local businesses during this pandemic? The first response goes to candidate Blackburn.
A good part of our plan in the city for the last several months. We've tried so many different ideas to try to help our small businesses, including waiving a lot of our regulations to allow businesses to operate outside. We've come up with joining with the Chamber of Commerce to have a gift card program to help some of our small businesses and to generate some business. We've also dedicated a large sum of money for low-interest loans to help businesses. The best thing I can say for our residents is to please do business here in Carlsbad. Help our small businesses survive. We'll get through this, but until then, we just need to give them all the support we can.
Thank you. Candidate Panagiotis. I am going to get this straight. The more I practiced it, the harder it got for me. Panagiotis.
Yes, Panagiotis. Well, I'm a small business owner, and I understand the pain that our small businesses are going through right now. They need to get cash. Cash is what they need. And what we're needing to do is infuse that cash right now at the local level, which we're continuing, and come up with ideas, because PPEs have gone up 500%. I spoke to a local dentist that said before COVID, he was paying $5 for a box of masks, and now he's paying $30. So COVID supplies increased expenses, and limiting capacity in our restaurants reduces revenue. So balance sheets are out of balance. I think we have to find ways to alleviate burdens, such as extending rental relief to businesses, which are important. And last week, my opponent voted against extending rental relief to small businesses. It's important to keep in mind that the more businesses that stay open, the more sales tax the cities can collect, which is one of our key revenue sources for the general fund. And for those businesses that have lost their business, I feel a deep sense of frustration and compassion for them. And I think that's all need to be said. Thank you.
Candidate Urbina.
I think the most important thing we can do for local business is to help them open up safely. We need to do that so they can take care of themselves and they can take care of their own employees. I've been a past chairman of the board of the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce. I've worked in the corporate world. I've owned a small business. I know how difficult it is right now to compete against the big-box stores. And when your competition isn't in Carlsbad down the street, but it's in China somewhere or Vietnam, we need to help our businesses open and stay open. We need to keep regulatory burdens low, and we need to make sure they're not getting taxed anymore, especially when we come out of this pandemic and the city is trying to grapple with less taxes. We need to support our businesses. My friend Mike Van Cook at that pizza place, 47 years in Carlsbad, and he lost his business.
Candidate Acosta.
I know that we need to support our businesses in this time. I'm a small business owner, too. I've had a business here in Carlsbad for the past 10 years. I currently chair the Government Affairs Committee at the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce and the Technology Advisory Committee at the Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce. I was part of the chamber group that discussed the proposals with the city for us to talk about the details of the $5 million loan program, Small Business and Micro Loan Program for local Carlsbad small businesses. I talk with business owners every single day. A big part of my campaign has been connecting with local business owners and local community members to talk about the issues. This is one I was talking about just yesterday with a vegan place here in Carlsbad District Four. We were talking about what more the city can do. Online permitting is something that really needs to be fixed. It's an issue where we can definitely use some help at the city. The city is doing a good job working together with small businesses, but there are definitely some ways we can use technology tools to ensure we are helping small businesses in Carlsbad.
Thank you. We'll go on to our second question. How will Carlsbad address affordable housing, and where should affordable housing be located? Candidate Acosta.
Thank you. Affordable housing, workforce housing in particular, that's our housing for our nurses, our teachers, our lab techs, is desperately needed. We have a housing supply issue in Carlsbad, and it's something that I've been talking about in my virtual coffee chats. We had one specifically to talk about housing with a land use attorney and with the community to discuss ideas and things that we can do. You may know that the state of California has come down with our RENA numbers. That's our Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers, and I've done a lot of research on this. I attend the Housing Element Advisory Committee meetings, and I watch the city council meetings and hear all the discussions. We definitely need to consider upzoning and rezoning, transit-oriented developments. There's quite a few proposals. It's a big issue, and I have a lot to say, and I've done a lot of research. So I'd be happy to talk with you further, but I only have one minute to answer this question.
Candidate Urbina.
My daughter told me about a year and a half ago that she was going to stay in Nebraska, where she was just about ready to graduate from college, because she couldn't imagine being able to afford to live in Carlsbad. I'm fighting for her, and that's one of the reasons why I'm running for Carlsbad City Council. We need to make sure we have a good mix of housing so that our kids can come back and live in Carlsbad. We need to have housing for our restaurant workers, our police officers, and our teachers. And that's going to require a good mix of housing throughout the city, all while maintaining the character of Carlsbad. We're going to need some high-density housing, but we can't destroy what we love about Carlsbad. Some of the places we can look, near mass transit areas, that makes some sense. There are some areas in the industrial area that are unbuilt on yet, and we can look to put some of those there. And the other thing I think would be successful is if we take some of the strip malls that are aging and we put housing on top of them when they're rebuilt.
Thank you. Candidate Panagiotis.
So the state requires us to build affordable housing units, but it's also the right thing to do. And our city staff has said that in order to comply with the state requirements, we have to build around 1,300 lower-income housing units and about 235 moderate-income housing units. And of the total, 85% are for low-income housing. Now, keep in mind that low income is an annual income of $53,000 for a family of four. Recently, Carlsbad residents responded to a housing survey. Over 4,000 people responded, which is one of the highest response rates of any city survey. And the question is, where should we build these units? The top response, the number-one response from Carlsbad citizens was, quote, "at vacant industrial sites that have been converted to residential use." I support this as an innovative way to support our affordable housing needs. We have the space. Our residents told us what they want. Now we need the political will to make that happen.
Thank you. Candidate Blackburn.
One of the things that was mentioned, Teresa said, we only have one minute to talk about something that's probably an hour or two's worth of a conversation. But we do need more inclusionary housing. One of the areas that I've been in communication with is the old Westfield Mall near Highway 78. There's a lot of property on the west side of that mall. It's near transit. It's near jobs. And the new owners, Brookfield, have been in talks with me about trying to figure out some way to build more high-density inclusionary housing. The city's always insisted that developers are required to provide 15, and now sometimes 20%, of all of their projects to be inclusionary. And as a result, we have about 2,500 inclusionary housing units in the city. But as the other speakers remarked, we're going to need a lot more. I've recently talked with one of the employers of a lot of service workers, and we're talking about putting in housing just for service workers.
Thank you. All right, the next question provides some background information, so it's a little long, but bear with me. According to the San Diego Hunger Coalition, more than 1 million San Diego County residents, including Carlsbad residents, are currently experiencing food insecurity. In a hunger-free San Diego, anyone in need of food assistance can get it. If elected, what types of policies will you support, and what actions will you take to create a hunger-free Carlsbad? Candidate Urbina.
I spent 20 years as president of the Carlsbad Christmas Bureau. Every year, we helped 500 less fortunate families, giving them food and gifts. This Friday, I'll be at the North County Food Bank with my Rotary Club, helping to feed more people. That is a critical thing that we need to take care of, our people who have difficulties in that way. We need to work with private partnerships. We need to work with organizations that do that so well, the North County Food Bank. They get food from other organizations and bring it and help put it in the hands of those people who need it. My church group feeds the homeless every month, pre-COVID, of course, but I help to put that together as well. And we need to help those people who are most vulnerable in our community.
Candidate Acosta.
Thank you. I have, in my entire life, volunteered for programs that help those who are least fortunate in our communities. And I've spent the last 10 years in Carlsbad, working with the National Charity League and multiple other nonprofit organizations, where I've sat on the board and taken leadership roles to help solve these community issues. One of the things that I recently learned about that I think it's something the city can do more with is the Carlsbad Community Gardens. You may know that we have three community gardens in Carlsbad. They're all in the north part of Carlsbad. We don't have any in our area or any outside of District One. So it would be great to have the city increase this program. We have 200 people on the waiting list, and a lot of those people are in my district. There is a church in District Four that has its own private community garden, but I would like to see the city help support these kinds of efforts. These community gardens give their extra produce to the Community Resource Center in Encinitas, and I'd like to see more of these kinds of programs funded by the city. Thank you.
Candidate Blackburn.
The city's worked very hard at trying to come up with as many solutions as we can. Everything from food bank, Community Resource Center, Boys and Girls Club, Brother Benno's La Posada de Guadalupe. And one of the things that I've done just personally, I've worked with Carlsbad Strawberry Farms, and we've been giving out weekly food boxes of fresh fruits and vegetables to some of the lower-income areas. But for a longer-term solution, the city does participate in a lot of help, especially through some of the already existing organizations, rather than the city coming up with their own. And I also forgot to mention that we do provide funds to Meals on Wheels and to our senior center for meals.
Thank you. Candidate Panagiotis.
Yeah, so this is clearly a regional issue, and I think it requires a regional response. These issues are requiring collaboration and cooperation across the county and with state partners and federal partners. Now, in Carlsbad, we're lucky to have outreach programs. We have faith organizations and nonprofits that help with food insecurity. I would like to continue to look for ways to support and provide additional resources to help the food insecure population. Now, I recently met with the Board of Directors of the Friend of La Posada, who shared with me that this men's shelter is really bursting at the seams. They have overcapacity. They simply do not have additional space. They are in need of supplies, such as food. So this issue is so critical for those most vulnerable and requires a collective effort across multiple levels of government, civil society, and community partners. But we have to start at home, because these are our neighbors.
Thank you. In a time of limited budget and resources, what will your top three priorities be? Candidate Panagiotis.
So this is a time to be proactive and not reactive. We're facing several crises, including a pandemic, economic downturn. We've got threat of wildfires. We have a declining tax base. So this is a time to be very intentional about taxpayer dollars, and everyone is looking for ways to tighten their belts to pay for those essential things in their lives. And local government should be doing the same thing. I will be working with the people of Carlsbad to ensure that every dollar spent is going to those critical needs and community priorities. I'm a problem solver. I'm a forward thinker, and I know that every decision is going to have impact on Carlsbad. They want to know that their tax dollars are being well-spent. We have to focus on public health. That is number one. We have to focus on our small businesses and those three major revenue sources that allow us to have the services we love in this city. So we need all hands on deck, and we need strong decision-makers to make tough decisions going forward. But we need the residents' input to fulfill our Carlsbad community vision.
Candidate Blackburn.
Carlsbad is very fortunate. We had a council in the past who put together a very well-planned city. And as a result, we have the financial ability to help, especially in a time like right now. We're able to help small businesses with low-interest loans. We're able to assign as many as five full-time police officers, assisted by counselors and other support personnel for our homeless community. And right now, I'm also concerned with making sure our safety gets all of the manpower and all of the resources they need. Right now, we have the best police and best fire departments in the county, and I want to make sure that we keep it that way. And we're very fortunate that our prior council has set us up to have the funds to be able to weather the storm.
Candidate Acosta.
I bring 20 years of experience working with government agencies to solve problems in good times and bad. And we know what it's like to experience an economic downturn. We've been in them before, from the dot-com bust to the Great Recession. We know that this is coming. We know that we are already experiencing an economic downturn because of the pandemic, and we're preparing for it. So it's really about planning and preparing. It's about tightening our belts. It's about investing in those things we really need to invest in for the long term. And I have chosen those top priorities and put them on my website, protecting the environment, ensuring safe neighborhoods, supporting our local economy, and managing our infrastructure very well. Those are the things that I will be focusing on as your next council member.
Thank you. Candidate Urbina.
I am frugal by nature, and particularly with other people's money. When I was president of the La Casa Youth Organization or president of the Carlsbad Christmas Bureau, I was very frugal, and I will carry that frugality through as a member of the Carlsbad City Council. Carlsbad has been fortunate because our predecessors have exercised strong fiscal management. And that's why during this pandemic, Carlsbad is not being hurt nearly as much as other cities have gone through this. My top priority is public safety. We have a right to feel safe in our homes. We've got to support our businesses, fiscal responsibility. We need to make sure our businesses survive and thrive so they can bring in the money that's needed to build our parks and libraries and responsible managed growth that we're going to have to accommodate in the next 10 years while maintaining the character of Carlsbad we love.
That's a great lead into our next question. The village is changing dramatically. What is your position on allowing three- and four-story buildings to be constructed in the downtown area? Candidate Blackburn.
Recently, we'd had discussions on the council about the three-to-four-story buildings. I pushed for limiting it to three stories, mainly because that's what the residents have asked for. But some of the benefits to having the four stories is for more housing in the village. The more people who live in the village, the more they'll be able to shop locally. They won't have to get in cars and drive, but it'll also help the businesses in the village. So that's one of the areas that we're looking at. That's a hard balance, though. The village has been traditionally a village, and when you start putting in four-story buildings, it kind of takes away from the villagey feel. So our planners have come up with different ideas for scaling back the top stories so it's harder to see from the lower levels, putting businesses on the bottom stories and residents on the top stories, mixed use.
Candidate Panagiotis.
So this is about development. And I want to say that Ron Packard, who was the mayor of Carlsbad in 1978, said, quote, "People don't ruin a community. Poor planning ruins a community." And I agree. Over a decade ago, bad decisions regarding development in Carlsbad were made by council members, including my opponent, who kept approving every development project that came in front of him. And this was despite countless letters, calls, public comments, warning the city, for example, that was using inaccurate traffic data information. And my opponent ignored these warnings, which directly violated the key principle of the city's growth management plan and our municipal code, which requires that development only occur when there's adequate facilities and improvement to meet the demands created by the development. And my opponent said he was going to decrease traffic and congestion every single time he's run for office. Well, he didn't get it done. It's time for a change. It's time to have someone who listens to the residents and not to developers.
Candidate Urbina.
When I first moved to Carlsbad, the population was 33,000. I lived right there in the village area, and it was a great place to grow up. A lot has changed since then, and we still have to accommodate even more growth. I've seen the city grow from 33,000 people to about 110,000 people, 115,000 people or so. And now, we're supposed to put in 3,900 new homes in the next decade. Well, as much as I would like the city to have remained exactly the way it was when I first got here, it didn't, and it's not going to remain the same way it is here. We have to provide that housing. So while I don't like the three stories, with state regulations taking away some of our local control, we are going to have to make sure... we are going to have to make sure that we are building without losing the character of Carlsbad, providing the homes and staying within the state law.
Candidate Acosta.
I believe it is our responsibility as leaders and as elected officials to listen to the community, to pay attention to the community's vision, and you'll see in the community vision that our residents came up with, with other stakeholders in the community, that we value our small beach town feel. You don't keep a beach town feel if you create high rises in your downtown area. And I think it's really important that we engage the public in this conversation, that we listen to them. We know what happens when the council doesn't listen to the community. That happened with Measure A. So I think it's really important that the city council listen to the testimony and the input of the public and pay attention to what the public is saying that we want. And that's what I'm doing now, even as a candidate, hosting weekly virtual events to connect with the community, to have discussions about important community issues, and to pay attention, to really listen to what the community wants so that I can be the best possible voice on the city council for the district.
All right, we're going to move on to a question that really impacts our seniors. What is your opinion of separating the senior center functions from parks of rec, both physically in the building and administratively, having set up as their own organization? First question goes to candidate Acosta.
Thank you. I have volunteered for years at the Carlsbad Senior Center, serving meals and delivering meals from there, working on various projects with my daughter through the National Charity League at the Carlsbad Senior Center. I do think that we need to listen to what the seniors need and what the seniors are saying, in addition to looking at the finances of the operations. So depending on what the finances look like and what the seniors at the senior center say that they need, listening to their input, I am open to the conversation of separating them out.
Thank you. Candidate Urbina.
Well, I hate to bring the one to bring this up, but how the city is organized is not part of the city council's job. And I feel like we've got council members now who want to micromanage the city. We hire a city manager to be that expert, the CEO of the city. And that city manager is the one who decides what places, what departments go where, and how they're managed. And the city council should be creating a vision from the 35,000-foot level. We should not be micromanaging down to where it goes. We're not the experts. We hire the experts. Steve Jobs said, "We don't hire smart people to tell them what to do. We hire smart people so they'll tell us what to do."
Thank you. Candidate.
Panagiotis.
Yes. I'm glad you have the rotation down better than I do. I keep checking my crib sheet. It's yours.
So the council's job is to provide policy direction. Policy is basically decision-making guidelines. Think of your password policy, right? So we provide direction, and the city manager implements that direction. So we're the board of directors. Our shareholders are the people of Carlsbad. Just today earlier, I just held my third session with seniors called Aging in Place with Seniors. It was the third session. All of the participants on the call were seniors that who live in Carlsbad. And it was very interesting as we dug into the data, but I just listened. We had a gerontologist on there, Alicia Clark, who provided great insight on how we can support our seniors. I support looking at that and putting a commission of seniors' voices because they get left out. Thirty percent of my district are seniors, and they want to age in place. They want to age in their home independently with purpose and vitality. And they're telling us, you know, "I don't feel like driving down to the senior center, and I don't get down there. I know they have programs. Maybe we do a satellite here at Calavera Hills Community Park. It's a
Thank you.
facility that we have." So, yeah.
Candidate Blackburn.
I think Phil Urbina said it best. When we hire a staff, and remember, we have over 700 employees. They're experts in their area. We have an excellent senior center, and I hear nothing but praise constantly. Once in a while, somebody's unhappy with one particular issue. But our senior center is absolutely one of the best in the North County. And sometimes decisions have to be made that you put different divisions together. It's just economy of scale, and we're able to do a lot more if we do the work smart. But I have dealt with our senior leadership, our senior center's leadership, and I think they're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. The next question goes to our beaches. What would you promote as the long-range plan for the area around Ponto Beach? Candidate Urbina.
I strongly support feasibility study that would look at all the questions and all the issues that need to be resolved to make that area, we talk about that 11 acres, into a park. I would love to see that be a beautiful park and saved for generations of people in the future. But we have to solve all those issues. The People for Ponto have brought up many of those issues, and we need to go through it step by step and make sure that can all be resolved, and then we can build that park. I think it would be irresponsible for me, as a city council member or even as a city council candidate, to make any more statement than that at this point. I think Carlsbad residents determine deserve council members who are going to look at the facts and then make a wise, intelligent, informed decision, and that's what I will do regarding the park in the Ponto area.
Thank you. Candidate Acosta.
I support a Ponto coastal park. I will work with the residents to build that park. I have already been in conversation with the residents for some time, for over a year now, and I've done extensive research, literally thousands of pages of documents, and talked with many people in positions of leadership about what has happened, what the history is with that area. And there have been many mistakes by the city, the zoning of the area, the collecting of fees from the local residents for a park that were never delivered upon, and in fact, a plan is made for a park to be built elsewhere with that money. So we definitely know what the facts are, and I support building a Ponto coastal park.
Candidate Blackburn.
Let's talk a little bit again about the proper process. We have a general plan that lays out what we need to do for our city for many years into the future. We don't piecemeal things like parks or anything else that we try to put together in the city. We have a long-term plan. Now with that said, our long-term plan is very stale. And our council, and with support from me, we've been talking about the General Plan 2.0. We need to update that. That's the proper place to put future parks, including Ponto Park, or any other changes that we want to make in our community. Piecemealing things and just popping a park in that's contrary to what our general plan says is not the way to run a city. But I do, in fact, want to have a lot of public input, take our time, do it right, and change or update, I should say, our general plan.
Thank you. Candidate Panagiotis.
Great. I'm running on a platform to protect our open spaces and environment, and I believe that Ponto should have a park. I respect the voice of the community, who has said in countless times that they support the creation of a park on our last remaining coastal space. And in fact, in January of this year, the city council meeting, the city shared that it made mistakes over the planting, the Ponto planting process dating back over 15 years. And one of those mistakes was not fully disclosing to the citizens the city and state's local coastal program requirement to first study a park at Ponto. Also, I think it's important for residents to know that my opponent should disclose that he received campaign contributions from Ramet and Associates. That's an Irvine attorney that represented Shopoff Realty Investments.
Candidate Panagiotis, can I ask that the League of Women Voters prides itself on making sure there are no attacks or more aggressive conversation around the candidates.
That's factual. It's on his financial disclosure.
I'm not saying it's not, but let me say this. So what we like to do in the forums is not have a debate. We do not provide an opportunity for other candidates to rebut. So we really like to keep the conversation positive about your thoughts and how you're going to contribute. So thank you very much for adhering to our guidelines. I appreciate it. And Arlene, can we give her 30 seconds back since I cut her off to finish that, please?
So I support the residents of Carlsbad to create a coastal park for Ponto and for generations of Carlsbadians to enjoy.
Thank you. The next question is, what do you think we should be doing about social justice issues? And it goes to you, candidate Panagiotis.
So I am a member of the International Association of Chiefs of Police. I am also past vice president of the NAACP and a current member of the NAACP. And I know that we have important conversations right now across the nation and in all of our communities about communities of colors who are crying out for help, for reform, not just in our police department, but in conversations in our businesses. And so we have to engage in that. This is an opportunity. This is a moment for us to rise to the occasion and to have courageous conversations with our community, to really weigh in and be vulnerable and courageous. And I know from talking to law enforcement officers and community partners like the NAACP that they want to have these conversations. It's we, the people, you know, police are the people, and the police are the public, and the public are the police. So I will work with them. I will work with communities, and I can bridge those because I have a foot in both of those organizations.
Candidate Blackburn.
I've been in a lot of discussions with our group here locally called Carlsbad Equality. And they were the ones who had some peaceful marches on Carlsbad Boulevard last month. What they're doing is absolutely the right process. They're meeting with community leaders, they're meeting with the police department, and they're trying to find common ground to make changes. They're speaking out, they're showing two sides to every story, and I support them. And I've been in contact with them several times, and I'll be honest, I'm learning a lot more from them than I think they are from me.
Candidate Acosta.
Thank you for the question. This is a moment, and it's a movement at the same time. We, as a nation, are talking about social justice issues in a way that we haven't for a long time. The passing of RBG two just yesterday, or just two days ago, reminds us that we have a lot of work left to do when it comes to equality and equity. As a woman and as a Latina woman, I have experienced my own share of discrimination in leadership positions in the business world and working with governments. I know that there is much more that we can do to create inclusive and welcoming communities right here in Carlsbad, in our organizations, at our city, with our community groups. I've been having these conversations. We had one just to focus on creating welcoming cultures for diverse groups. We had that with two guest speakers just a month ago. So I will continue to have these conversations and to take this matter seriously. I think there's a lot of work that we can do together as a community on social justice.
Candidate Urbina.
I think we need to have those conversations with many, many different people. When we had the protests here in Carlsbad, my mother happens to have a house, a couple of houses away from 101 Carlsbad Boulevard. And I was there, and I watched those protesters go, and I listened to them, and I talked to many of them. We need to continue to have those conversations to figure out what the problems are and what concrete steps we can do to address them. The Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce recently had a webinar just to discuss that as well. And so we need to take a look at our residents, how they are living, and what issues they are having as well. As a Latino man, I have had my share as well, but we'll move on from that, and we'll listen to what other people have to say about that and what our problems are so that we can address them with action.
Thank you for that. Carlsbad has HOT teams, H-O-T, who move homeless people out of the camps but have no place to send them for safety. So the people end up making another camp, getting it taken down, and the cycle repeats. What specific ideas do you have to create some safe places in Carlsbad for the homeless? Candidate Blackburn.
My experience on that goes all the way back to 25 years ago as a police sergeant. We had a lot of people living, field workers, living along the Aguahedi Onda Lagoon shore. The state of California said they had to be moved. That's when I first started working with CRLA and other organizations, including La Posada de Guadalupe. And we were able to relocate and rehouse these folks to where they'd be in a safer location. But our HOT team is not just booting homeless people out of camps. If I could have a lot more time, I can tell you some of the amazing stories that they have been able to help our homeless, and they don't try to help them with one big brush stroke. They go to each one individually. They find out what their issues are, and they work tirelessly to try to figure out what we can do to help that individual, one homeless person at a time, and our HOT team is
Thank you. Candidate Panagiotis.
So homelessness, like food insecurity, is a regional issue, and it requires the collaboration and cooperation, not just in North County but across the county. And as we see budget cuts and other social programs, it really impacts the ability to provide shelter, to provide jobs for people that need them. And we have a wonderful HOT team, Holly Nelson, who's our homeless outreach coordinator. I mean, she understands the issues, and when you go out and you speak to people on the street, and many of them are from Carlsbad, who have lost jobs, who are not able to provide for themselves, who have family members, they don't have support services. And so we have one homeless shelter here. We have other beds that we can provide. We try to find a bed for every person that is unsheltered. And so we really need to focus on what are the needs. The first need is shelter, and then it's food insecurity, and it's jobs. So I really want to work, continue, and look for additional resources to support these organizations that are doing great work to help our homeless population.
Candidate Urbina.
I think the city needs to be compassionate. We need to help those who need help and will accept it. Our HOT team goes out and works to put people together with the services that can help them, and we need to continue doing that. But homelessness isn't a matter of one phone call. It's a matter of a lot of decisions over many, many years, and it's not an easy fix by any means. Solutions for Change serves the North County, and it has a thousand-day program to give people the training to go through so that when they're done with that, they can take care of themselves. They don't have to be homeless. Now, it's a long-term investment, and we need to do more programs like that that help people escape homelessness. We also need to continue supporting La Posada. I was just there donating some food a couple of weeks ago. They have about 100 beds, and we need to help those who need help most.
Candidate Acosta.
Thank you. This is a complex issue. I sat on the San Diego Union Tribune Community Advisory Board, and we tackled this issue with the entire region. We had a forum of hundreds of people who came together to listen to a panel of the top advisors on homelessness issues in the region, to talk about housing first, to talk about multiple models. This is something we need to solve together as a region, and luckily, we are already working on that. There is a task force for North County that includes the county and all of the cities in the North County area that is working on solutions. Of course, the county is the arm of the state that covers health and human services, so we lean on them for some financial support and for support from their agency, but cities need to step up too. Our HOT team cannot remove encampments if we don't have enough beds, if we don't have shelter, that's state law. I've done a lot of research and talked with a lot of people about these issues, and there's a lot more that we can do to help our homeless population with enough resources and with people pulling together to help them.
Our next question's going to be our last so that we can end on time. The final question is, do you support Black Lives Matter? Why? Candidate Acosta.
Yes, I support Black Lives Matter. I have posted on my social media and stated publicly and hosted one of my coffee chats just on Black Lives Matter. I think it's very important that we acknowledge that the Black community has suffered the most. I talked about being a minority myself as a woman and a Latina, but we know that the Black community has the worst rates for incarceration and for many other statistics. We need to help. And we need to acknowledge the discrimination, whether it's from use of force and police force issues whether it's from use of force and police force issues or it's from other discrimination in the workplace and other areas of our lives. So let's all band together and try to solve these issues together. Definitely. Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Candidate Urbina.
First, I support Black Lives Matter. I support all lives. I support, as a Latino man, I have experienced times where I felt I was discriminated against as well. And we need to listen to people and find out what it is that they've experienced because my experiences are much different from anybody else's experience. And certainly, blacks have had different experiences. They've had tougher experiences. We need to help them raise the bar. We need to help them economically, all of our underprids, we need to help them economically so that they can rise above and be able to participate equally in our government, in our businesses, in all of the things that are important. And we need to listen, listen, and listen.
Thank you. Candidate Panagiotis.
Yes, Black Lives Matter. We only need to go back 400 years to understand the history of black people in this country and time and time again, on almost every metric, they have fallen behind and that's no coincidence. From mass incarceration to wealth gaps, education gaps, and health, every metric, they are disproportionately affected. And so Black Lives Matter means that there is not a level playing field. It has been unequal since the very beginning. And all of the movements that we've had keep coming and we've changed laws and that helps a little bit. But it's really about culture. It's about hearts and minds, about seeing the humanity in every person, regardless of their skin color. But we know that skin color makes a difference to people's biases, whether they're conscious, whether they're unconscious. We see people in this country being very blatant about their racism. So Black Lives absolutely matter and this is our original sin, which we have to address in this country.
Candidate Blackburn.
I want to make sure that you know that I do care and black lives do matter. But as a councilperson, I want to make sure that you understand that we represent an entire community. We don't just single out one group. We have Latino residents, we have Jewish residents who've dealt with antisemitism. We have residents with physical or emotional issues and they have to deal with discrimination. So I want to make sure we don't single out one group, that we are inclusive of all groups, that yes, black lives matter, but so do Hispanics and Jewish, and I can go on for a long time.
Thank you. So I know that many of you still have questions and I know you're eager to learn more about the ballot measures you're going to be asked to vote for. I just want to take a minute to remind everyone that if you'd like a nonpartisan website to get information on both candidates and ballot measures, we encourage you to go to votersedge.org. They also track the money that's being donated, so that's a great way to see who's spending on a prop measure or supporting a candidate. Again, it's votersedge.org. If you want further information on candidate forums that are coming up or if you'd like to hear the pros and cons of the props on tape, we encourage you to go to mylwv.org. That's my.lwv.org. Go to California, North County, San Diego. There is a plethora of information that you'll find really useful there. The League of Women Voters does the hard, hands-on work to try to empower democracy and defend our rights. If you'd like to join us, and we invite both men and women to join us, you can do that on our website. You can also follow us on social media. We'd love to have you join along with us. There's some key dates. Everybody here knows Election Day is November 3rd. The last day to register to vote is November 19th. If you've moved, changed your name, or wish to change your party affiliation since the last time you voted, you need to go and reregister. There's a super easy way to do it. In San Diego, you can go to sdvote.com. That takes you right to the register of voters. From that website, you can also track your ballot. They have a great feature you can sign up for called Track My Ballot and it will tell you where your ballot is every step of the way. That's just another way for you to gain confidence in the mail-in ballot system. We encourage you to bring your family and friends and neighbors along with you to vote this election. If you missed that October 19th deadline that I told you about that's so critical, if you're watching it after that date, please go and down to the county registrar's office and file a provisional ballot. You can file a provisional ballot up until 8:00 PM on November 3rd. Now it's time to give the candidates a chance to make their closing statements. One minute time. We're going to go in reverse order from the opening. That means we start with candidate Urbina.
Thank you. Carlsbad has always been a place where families thrive. Carlsbad has great city services. We have great police departments, all the great stuff. And the reason we have that is because of those previous city councils who have exercised long-term management and sound financial planning. I'm proud that the mayor and six past city council members, whose experience on the city council totals 114 years, have endorsed my candidacy. They know what it takes to be an effective council member and they know I'll be effective as a council member. They've worked with me for 20 years when I was president of the Carlsbad Christmas Bureau, helping less fortunate families. They've been to the Carlsbad Rotary Oktoberfest that I ran that raised $50,000 a year, putting directly back into the Carlsbad community. They've seen that success. That is the leadership that I will bring to the Carlsbad City Council.
Candidate Costa.
Thank you for the opportunity to have the discussion tonight about the election. I've enjoyed having a conversation with all of you. I also enjoyed sharing a bit about my extensive experience and my deep commitment to Carlsbad. I have worked for 20 years with government agencies, starting from the age of 21, working for a state senator, to work for the League of California Cities, representing cities throughout California. And I know that my ability to collaborate, to problem-solve, and to innovate will be desperately needed here in Carlsbad and greatly valued. I am proud to live here in District 4 and I'm listening to the community so that I can be the best possible and most effective voice for them on the city council. Thank you.
Candidate Blackburn. We made it all the way to the end.
Experience and institutional knowledge matters. I've served with mayors Lewis and Hall. I've served with council members Colchon and Packard. And although I don't always agree with them, I sure have learned an awful lot from them. Some of the accomplishments that I'm very proud of over my last 12 years, and there's been many, but some, I'll just pull out a few. I've been working very hard for many years to work with the old Westfield Mall. I've been working on modernizing our traffic signal technology, which will cut about a third off our red light wait time. I banned, worked on banning retail sales of puppy mill dogs and the opening of Algonorte Park. Carlsbad is the envy of San Diego and my goal is to continue to keep us as the envy of San Diego. We have the best safety services, quality roads, parks, libraries, open space, and I can go on and on.
Thank you. Candidate Panagiotis.
So I want to thank our host tonight, the League of Women Voters, an organization founded six months before the 19th Amendment was ratified and which paved the way for me to run for office today. And just days ago, our country lost its most fierce advocate and defender of women's rights, notorious RBG. Ruth Bader Ginsburg fulfilled her oath to the Constitution to form a more perfect union and establish justice by defending gender and racial equality. And her example outside the courtroom, to me, is what I most admire. Despite the loss of her mother before graduation, rejection of jobs based on her gender, the death of her husband, and many battles with cancel, she persisted and prevailed. Our Carlsbad community is facing significant challenges, but nothing that we can't overcome with tenacity, courage, collaboration, and political will of the people. Like Ruth, we are resilient and we will forge ahead into an uncertain future with positive determination. My name is Leela Panagiotis and I thank you for your time tonight.
On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I want to thank you all for your participation tonight and for running for office. It takes a lot of commitment and a lot of courage, so thank you. It means a lot to us. And I want to especially thank the Carlsbad unit for helping us get this organized this evening, to the community members who solicited such great questions. I just want to thank them for really putting the effort in to make democracy work. So on behalf of the League and the Carlsbad unit, thank you all very much and good night.
Thank you.